Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting of Wednesday, September 4th. Welcome to our meeting of Wednesday, September 4th. It's a little after 7:00 PM. I do have to say, this is the first time that I've actually had to talk over folks, and even though you might think that that's an annoyance to me, it's not. This is the, I would say, the largest crowd that we've had as school committee in a long, long time, and I'm happy to see everyone here. The first thing on our agenda tonight is public participation. Is anyone in the office that would like to address the committee? If so, please come up to the table down below. Seeing no one, I'd like to move on to good news. Oh, sorry.
Brian.
Oh, thanks, Brian, sorry about that.
Good evening, and I don't know who has recognized me over there, but thank you. My name is Brian Fitzgerald, I'm a 5th grade teacher at the middle school now, and I'm the president of the Wareham Education Association. About a year ago, I came in front of you and did my summer thank yous, and I thanked the custodial staff for what they had done in the summer 2012. And I guess someone took that to be a challenge, because they had to do more this past summer. They took Everett and moved into the multi-service center. They moved about 15 of us and all of our materials, and it was a lot. From elementary schools to here in the middle school, there were chain reaction moves in the three schools, people moving around the high school. And they somehow did it all. It's not somehow, they worked hard. They were moving boxes at 9 o'clock at night. They were moving things on Saturdays, and the buildings still look great. And I want to thank them, and I know that many, many educators in this district appreciate the incredible work they did to get these schools ready for the summer. Excuse me, get ready for September. And the schools look wonderful. Excuse me. And the secretaries did so much to make sure that students were pretty much in the right room in September, and if they weren't, we knew where they were supposed to be. And while I'm a matter of thank yous, I do want to extend my appreciation to Jeff Swett for, you know why, Jeff, for stepping up and ensuring that our tennis team would have a surface, a playable surface, a broad range of choices in athletics is just as important as a broad range of choices in academics for the students of Wareham High School and for Wareham High School itself, and we appreciate that. Thank you for doing that. And the last thing, this author is, the author of a blog called School Finance 101, and don't worry, I'm going to summarize. And he publishes an annual list of what he calls, not me, "The Hundred Most Financially Screwed Districts in the Country." And there's a lot of methodology that I'm going to read through. Basically, he looks at districts where the labor market isn't as rewarding compared to the surrounding area, and the students in the schools face deeper challenges in the surrounding area. And no, this is not about Wareham before you think that. But I did look. And of the 100 most financially screwed districts in the country, on that list was the former employer of our current superintendent. And I mention that just because I know that Blackstone Millville had a great record of accomplishment, and I know that Ms. Shaverhood was a big part of that. And if she could work that miracle there, I know that she's going to do some great things at Wareham. You have no more willing partners than people who've given 30 more, and I still think that's a good thing, giving their professional lives to the cause of educating the children of Wareham. We welcome you. We've seen you in the buildings, you've been communicating with the educators, and we look forward to working with you for years to come. Welcome to Wareham, Kim, and we can't wait to move forward with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee this evening? Seeing no one, I'd like to move on to good news. Anyone that has good news? Well, I'm just going to say, a matter of good news is, welcome to all the students back to our 2013-2014 year. What the reports we've had, and just walking around my own son's school, it's great to have everybody back in school. I don't know if you feel that way, but we're happy to have you back, and also just taking a look at a really great year going into this year. The other piece of good news, if you haven't seen it yet, the school has a new website, or the district has a new website. It is wonderful. If you haven't had a chance, please go through, take a look. If you see anything on there that needs to be updated, or pieces of information that you think would be important from a community perspective, or from a student perspective, or links that you would like on there, please let the superintendent's office know. We want to make sure that that's a place where more and more people go to be able to find out the business of this district. So I think that's a piece of good news. I'll move on to the minutes of August 21st. Are there any changes, or suggestions, or comments?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain. 2-0-2. Okay.
Oh, two abstentions.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, 2-0-2.
We two.
We had abstained, we weren't here last time. I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, which is the introduction to fall athletic teams and Wareham High School band.
Thank you. I would like to invite Mr. Palladino, Mr. Rodriguez, to come down and introduce the coaches, and the coaches will then in turn say a little bit about their season and introduce their players or their captains.
Welcome.
Thank you. Some of our teams were playing games today. I know I see our football players here, girls soccer, field hockey. Our girls volleyball team is playing right now. Our boys soccer team's playing, just played. The band is here, and the band, is Coach Nalt here with the football team? A coach, one on coach? Come on down and bring, introduce your captains and talk a little bit about your season.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Dan Nalt, I'm the football coach at Wareham High School. We have 45 to 50 guys that have been out a good part of the summer, getting ready for their season, not to mention, they all play other sports. And I would think that of my older kids, I think there's three or four that don't play multiple sports. The young man sitting on the side of me is Richie Austin, he's one of my captains. The other captain is Owen Braley. Owen has a prior engagement. I'm expecting him here maybe a little late. He's a new driver, so he's probably not going to be here on time. Our season is new this year, we're in a South Coast Conference, and we're into a new playoff system where we play seven games. And then games eight, nine, and 10, we don't really know who we're going to play. The top eight teams in our division go to the playoffs, and then depending on the level of success, you're seeded for your last three games with teams of equal measure if you don't make the playoffs. When you lose, you get reseeded, and then everybody plays on Thanksgiving. It's really different for us. We're playing Bishop Stang Friday night at Bishop Stang, and that's where all our effort's been. Do you have a question for Richie?
Questions from the committee?
Yes.
Yes.
I am a coach of a different sport. I love sport, I applaud the fact that everybody's here, and I very much appreciate it. But I do have a question for you as a captain.
Yes.
I was surprised to hear Terry Bradshaw announced that if he had had a son, he wouldn't let him play football because of the fear of injuries, concussions specifically. How do you react when a Hall of Fame quarterback says that about your sport?
I've had three concussions, so. It doesn't bother me. It's normal.
Does it bother your parents?
I think that in the old days, Richie's concussion where he's saying he's had three, it's true, but there's extreme vigilance and caution and safety when it comes to head injuries. He's been through all the protocols, he's been to his own doctor. The only reason he's playing football now is because he's fit to. When Terry was playing, he probably didn't get all that protection, that's probably why he's talking the way he is, so. When they're out, they, and they're symptom-free, there's a procedure, and it takes weeks to come back. They're provided things in school accommodations, and in our program itself, he's not the norm. We don't have very many concussions. Our kids are taught to hit with their chest and not leave with their head. We don't let kids play if they're not safe.
Thank you, good luck.
And Coach, you also have a trainer onsite?
Yes, we do, yep. As football coach, I can never be responsible for putting an injured player on the field because it's not my decision. It's the trainer, it's the medical staff.
And before the football leaves, I, if you haven't noticed, we are having a facelift at the football field. We're painting the buildings, not we, the football team's painting the buildings, our school colors. So by our opening game, we will have beautiful blue buildings trimmed in white, courtesy of the football team, so thank you very much for your community service.
One more second, I'm sorry, hold on. I'm sorry, we didn't go through all the, there might be another question, just one. Sorry about that, just one second. Any other questions? Okay?
I got one.
Yep.
No questions, just a comment. I think that this is great, that we've got a new athletic director, we've got a new superintendent, and I see all these beautiful young faces out there, and, you know, we hear an awful lot of things about Wareham, about Wareham not being good. Well, you know what? Someone that's been in Wareham since 1966, and I've been bleeding blue for an awful long time, we are the best. And this is a perfect example of why we are the best, and I really appreciate the fact that everyone has come here this evening to just share a little bit with your school committee, who does care about what happens to you, and cares about, you know, not only your successes, but what it makes, what it means to you as an individual. So I want to thank you and your coaches, and thank you for representing our school, and go Vikings.
Our girls soccer coach is here. Coach Sylvia, come on down. Couple of your captains.
I have more than one. You want to share? There you go.
Are you sure?
Three for one, how about that? I'm Cindy Sylvia, and I'm the head coach of the Lady Vikings soccer team. I've been with the soccer program for 17 years, and every year is a new year, and I love to see new faces. But one of the things that is really encouraging about this year's soccer team is it's the first time that we have had 8th graders on our team, so it's a merging of the middle school and the high school. And I have to say, it's been an incredible experience for both our upperclassmen, as well as the 8th graders that came over, so I'm really excited about that. And to lead them into that sport are three extraordinary individuals that I have as my captains. My first captain is Sidney Johnson, and she's a four-year senior, and she's an amazing leader, she takes people under her wing, she works hard, she works in the offseason, and we are very lucky, and I am lucky enough to have all three of these young ladies in class, and they are truly student athletes. Also, I have Brianna Muir, who's a three-sport athlete. She works hard with the younger players, she sets a good role, she's a good role model, sets a good example, and Emma Winn. And one of the things that these three young women bring to our program is leadership. They bring leadership on the field, they bring leadership in the locker room, they bring leadership at home, and they bring leadership to the field. It's not just soccer, it's every aspect of the life, of their life, that they bring their leadership. And as you can see, all we have to do is say we need to be somewhere, and our team responds to that. They respond to that because of their leadership and the high expectations that we set. As far as our season goes, I'll talk about that a little bit. One of the things that I like about our Wareham teams, that they bring to every contest, is heart and hustle. And I think that that is our mantra that we bring throughout all of our seasons, is heart and hustle. And if you go to any game that our team will play, anytime, against any opponent, you will see that. They will bring everything that they have, they'll bring things that they didn't even know they had to the field on any given day. And they will always, and I mean always, make you proud of them. And that's the one thing I love about being associated with Wareham High School Athletics, and especially the soccer program. They make you proud.
Thank you, Cindy. I'm going to start off, I have a question, because I wasn't able, I mean, all of these guys have all of these questions, and I'd ask the same thing to you, Coach Nalt. Who do you think is your toughest team this year?
Every single one we play. We play, we play in the toughest, one of the toughest soccer divisions. Ponacquid is ranked in the top five of the state, they're incredible. Deitner Hobeth has 11 of their starters who play on club teams, they're very difficult. Old Rochester's always a rival. And being that we don't necessarily win the South Coast Conference very often, at all, I don't think we've ever won it, to be honest with you. But the one thing that I will talk about, and this is the coach from DR said, she is absolutely petrified of playing us. Now, this is a woman that has won the South Coast Conference five, six, seven times just in the time that I've been associated with the program, and her biggest fear is playing Wareham. Because she said, "If I could just put your kid's heart in my kid's body, we would be unbelievable." And I think that says a lot to how we're going to approach every game. So I think everybody we play is going to be out to play a tough game with us, and we're going to be in a struggle every time we take the field, but that's what we're used to. So we're just going to bring our best and hope for the best.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Yes.
Last year's team has significantly higher GPA than the average. I took a sneak peek at Coach Rodriguez's report that he's going to give a little bit later. So I know probably some of you were part of that team, so I want to congratulate you. Do you have any comments about what it's like to be both a student and an athlete at Wareham High School?
I think being involved in sports and like other activities and trying to balance the school schedule, I think it actually helps you. I know it takes time out of your day, but it teaches you how to time manage, how to prioritize, and how to get things done, because you can't put it off till later because you're going to be playing a game later. So I actually think being involved like in a sport, it does actually boost your grades and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think that being a student athlete, it like, playing a sport motivates you to do better in school also. And sometimes when the weather's not that great and we can't have practice outdoors on the field, our coaches have academic practice in one of the classrooms, and we all sit around and help each other. And we like tutor each other kind of when everyone needs help, especially like the younger girls on the team, when they need help with their classes we've already taken. So it's a big help for everyone.
Thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I know we have some field hockey players here, they had a game today. Their coach wasn't able to attend. The game ended up late, and she wasn't being able to come to the game, but I'd like to have the three, two or three of the field hockey players come on down. Who's here, come on down, I saw them. Come on down. Field hockey is a program that we just have varsity. We have a small amount of girls playing, and we're trying to build that up. And my goal is not just in field hockey, but in all the sports. I'd like to have some interaction with middle schools and the elementary schools, the middle school and the elementary schools in Wareham, and try to develop something so that they want to become Wareham Vikings. That's my goal. Hopefully, in the next year or two, we will be able to do that, so we have a varsity JV and maybe possibly a freshman field hockey team again. Come on down, girls.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Emily Bakayaki, I am one of the four seniors on the field hockey team, I'm one of two captains. This is Emily Chambers, she's a sophomore, returning player for varsity. Our coach unfortunately was unable to make it, this is her first year with the program. She, her brother from Germany's home for a couple nights, so.
He got a kick.
Kind of, yeah, we had a game. No luck, though.
Nothing more exciting than a school committee meeting.
Excuse me?
I said nothing more exciting than a school committee meeting when you're coming in from Germany.
Absolutely.
You want to tell us a little bit about your season coming up?
Sure, so as everybody knows, field hockey isn't really a top sport, and you see all the soccer girls sitting there, and you see all the big football players. Field hockey's a really, really close-knit sport, we have 15, 16 girls in our team. No one really talks about field hockey, it's kind of like that little sport that no one knows how to play, so we inherited all the 8th graders we could find, and we're just teaching them the sport. It's kind of a thing you pick up slowly but surely. All the rules, if anyone's ever watched a field hockey game, there's a whistle every three seconds.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whistle every three seconds, so it's a hard game to pick up on, but these girls have learned so quickly. I've watched so much hours of field hockey, I'm the goalie, and I've been a four-year varsity goalie, so I've watched so many hours of field hockey, and seeing how all these girls are picking up, I watched Emily in her freshman year pick up on it, just like that. We have an 8th grader up there, another sophomore, Paige and Ruthie, and how many 8th graders do we have on our team? Five, we have five 8th graders, and they're not even in high school yet, and they've already made a commitment to be on a varsity team, and I think that's amazing.
That's great. Questions? Yep.
I think one of the things that we have to talk about in terms of field hockey is the fact that you're competing with other sports that we didn't have years ago, but field hockey was real big years ago, because we didn't have soccer or whatever, and we, actually, we've won quite a few.
Banners.
Championships. So we look for the future, and if you get these 8th graders tuned into field hockey, then I'm sure that the participation rate will go up, so keep plugging and keep up the good work.
Absolutely.
Just want to echo what Dr. Sylvia said, just keep up the good work. And I'm looking at your last year's record, and you had the two wins, what towns were those?
Fairhaven and? Born.
Okay, good. There are two ties as well, I noticed.
Oh, yeah, we had a scrimmage against Sharon, so Sharon and Fairhaven. Fairhaven was our last game, and it was like out of a movie, it was pouring rain, we won 2-0, we ran off the field faster than I've ever seen anyone run. It was crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a comment. I've watched field hockey. Your GPA for last year was actually higher than the soccer teams, so congratulations, and I've just, excuse me. And I've decided it has to be to understand the rules.
Absolutely.
Because they're nuts, but keep up the good work, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Just one last comment. I went to Nauset, and field hockey, huge, I know it was a long time ago, but huge, huge, huge in our school. So if I can implore anybody out in the community, go to these games, as well as the soccer, as well as football, as well as the basketball, but also go to these games, support this team, because it's, it actually is, it's exciting, and it's something interesting, and something to really get into, so thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Our other teams, like I said, our girls volleyball team is playing right now at Great New Bedford Volk Tech. Coach is Rachel Helia, she's done a very, very good job with them. My office is right there, and I just, I'm down there a lot, seeing how she works hard with the girls, the girls have done a great job, their participation is pretty good. Boys soccer also has a decent amount out. They're trying to get more boys that have played soccer before. Their varsity team, even their starting team probably has two or three kids that haven't played soccer before, that's amazing to me. So that's the goal of him. He's done a good job trying to get the younger kids, 8th graders and younger kids involved, building up a program to try to get them competitive with, you know, teams like Great New Bedford Volk, for an example. And our golf team had a match today away, too. Those are our sports in the fall, that's Coach Montero. There's a smaller group, a small group of kids playing that, and he's trying his best, too. Like I said, one of the things I've seen here, since I've just been here a short time, is I want to try to get the participation up to a higher level to more kids, and I think that starts, like I said, with the middle schools, and the, middle school, correct me, and the elementary schools. And I have some ideas in the next couple of years, hopefully that will help. And cheerleading, and cheerleaders, any cheerleaders? Okay. Actually, she does a great job, too, she's got plenty of girls out. That's Madeline Silva, Sylvia Silva, she does a great job with them. And those are our fall sports, and next thing will be the band?
And I want to thank Ed as well. He officially started, I guess, last week, but he's been in pretty much at least three days a week since pretty much June, and I know we'll get a chance to speak with Steve, and I want to thank Steve publicly as well for everything he did to keep us afloat last, the end of, the middle of last year when we lost our athletic director. At this point, I want to bring up our band. We have a new band director, Heather Ware, who comes to us right out of UNH, and she's extremely motivated, has done a lot in the first few months. She was in almost all of June, working with the person that was leaving the position, and she's been in all summer long, with new ideas, innovative ways to get kids involved. So I'm going to bring up Heather Ware and her captain of the marching band.
Hi, as Mr. Palladino said, I'm Heather Ware. First-year teacher here at Wareham, but I'm really excited to be here. We started our season about two weeks ago, but the kids have been working all summer on music on their own, and we're really excited about it. One thing that I was, Mr. Palladino and I were able to accomplish over the summer was purchasing new uniform pants for the students of the marching band, marching unit, sorry, that's what we call it. We call it the marching unit because we're not just the band, we are the band and the color guard in the fall. So we have new pants for the band, and right now we're working on doing some serious fundraising to buy new jackets for them. Jackets are not cheap, they run around $160 for one. So that's going to be a big undertaking, but we're really trying to get that done for Wareham's 275th anniversary parade next summer. We had band camp two weeks ago, and it was a huge success, I think. The hard work and the dedication that I've seen from my members is unlike any program that I have ever been involved with. They are extremely dedicated, they are there all the time in the band room, working and wanting, asking questions, wanting to get better. So I'm really excited for the season. We are planning on competing with the New England Scholastic Band Association in mid-October. Hopefully, we haven't set those dates yet, but probably the 19th or the 20th of October. So we'd love to have a group of people come down and support us at that. But other than that, we'll be performing at all the home football games that we can, so. And this is Jeff Sefello, he's my lead trumpet player, so. Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, any questions? Yes.
Hi. Just curious, how many, how many students do you have in the band portion of the band unit this year?
Somewhere around 17 or 18 this year. We have seven girls in the color guard as of yesterday. We added two new members to the band just yesterday, so I believe we're up to 18 was the last time I checked. We're open to students from 6th grade all the way up to 12th, so any middle school students that want to get involved, they're welcome to. We have practice Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:30 to 6:00, so.
Okay, and you might not know the answer to this, since you're new, but how many did we have last year? Mr. Palladino, maybe you know?
Less than that.
I know, I know.
I'd just be guessing, but I'd say it doesn't.
Yeah, well, I'm glad that there's, there's added interest.
Much different.
Um, that, keep up, you know, keep up the good work. And I'm going to talk to my son about it. I didn't know you could do that in sixth grade to, to the high school band?
Yeah.
Really? Okay.
The sixth graders that we have are doing really well. They're really taking it, taking the bull by the horns, if you will.
Oh, great.
And getting really into it.
How many sixth graders do you think you have?
Quite a few.
Yeah, a good majority. Um, probably about five of them, I'd say.
Great.
That's probably where, that's probably where it'll grow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The program is only going to grow if we have some support from middle school and a huge filter up from there, so.
Because last year in the, last year in the high school concert band, we literally got zero freshmen in the program and this year we got one freshman in the program. So I think that marching band, because of how many, how many people see it at the football games, it'll interest them and that people will learn to appreciate the marching band more if we're able to like put on a good show and actually make it entertaining rather than a space filler. So if kids in elementary or middle school see us at a football game and they enjoy it and it looks fun to them, that's probably where we'll get most of it because I don't know what's going on in the middle school program wise.
Yeah.
Very, very good. Thank you.
Question? Yes.
Also, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it? You guys good?
Just, I, I would ask if you don't mind if we can get them home because they have homework. Yeah, if, if this is over, I'd like to send them.
No, I'm sorry. You have to stay for the whole meeting. It's going to go until eleven o'clock tonight, so get comfortable.
They can watch it on TV when they get home, so.
No, again, thank you all for coming here tonight, but more importantly, thank you for, seriously, it's, there's, there's a reason why we call it the pride of Wareham and that's who you all are. And again, anybody who's watching, the newspapers that are here, I want these teams promoted like there's no tomorrow. We have to not only get more participation, but then also more people out, um, that are supporting all of you. So thank you again for being here tonight. Christian, we're just going to take a break for just about five minutes while we have
When we ask for a sense of humor, we'll let you know.
Welcome back. Uh, thank you everyone for allowing us that break. It was going to be quite noisy as, uh, as all of the incredible kids that are on our program, um, left the building, so we wanted to give them their due and catch up a little bit, which we got an opportunity to do that too. Uh, I just want to say thank you again to the superintendent, to Mr. Palladino, to our athletic directors for pulling that together. Um, I think that it's, it's always a great opportunity to be able to hear from, um, from the kids that are part of different programs within our schools. Um, and it just gives not only us, but also the community, uh, pretty much an introduction to what's going on and what's going to go on for this year. So thank you again for pulling that together. The next item on our agenda is the, uh, two thousand and twelve, twenty thirteen athletic report.
Good evening. I'm Steve Rumbold. I was the interim athletic director for two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. I believe, um, Michael McMillan has disseminated these reports to you. Is that correct?
Yes.
I hope. I did make copies just in case.
No, we didn't.
So I will, uh, I'll just give you a, a quick, uh, opening statement and basically that is, uh, as you know, I took over this position in September of last year when our athletic director, uh, left us. We did not have this type of template set up, so there were some things that you requested that are not in here because I was not able to produce that information because I, I was not told I needed to, basically. For instance, user fees by sport for the fall and the winter. For some reason, I don't know why I did this, but I did it in the spring. I think it was because I, I saw what I had had to do in the fall and the winter to produce these reports. But, uh, bottom line is what we, what I was very happy about, uh, with this budget is that with the budget cut at the beginning of the year and then another twenty-seven or twenty-seven, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars taken out of that budget during the year, we still ended up with a little bit of money left over. And, um, we would always like to see our teams with better equipment, better uniforms, that type of thing. Um, but I think we did a pretty good job. We were able to purchase some new uniforms and that type of, uh, uh, that type of thing. The teams had everything that they needed to compete, uh, and to compete at a, at a, at a high level. So I will, uh, open up the floor to you to see what questions you have. I'm sure you have a few.
Just a quick point of clarification. So the report that was put together, uh, or that, that was, the template that was put together.
Right.
Um, the data points that are in there, are those being captured from fall sports on? So every.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have all.
Except for the user fee by sport in the fall and the winter. In other words, I can't tell you what, when, when I took over the position, there had already been deposits made.
Yep.
And, um, so I didn't know what sports those deposits were made for.
Right. But I just mean going forward, we're able to track that information.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, Ed?
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I'll open it up to questions. Who wants to begin?
Go ahead. No, I'm not ready yet.
Okay. I'm getting whiplash.
Oh.
Go.
Okay. Um, my concern has, over the course of the time that I've been on the school committee, has been, while I recognize that deficits are in essence always going to occur, meaning we'll only, only have a small portion of the cost of providing sports covered by our revenues. And of course, some, some sports outside of user fees have no revenues, gate receipts, et cetera.
Most.
Most, exactly, most. And unfortunately, transportation is a, is a big nut to, to deal with beyond the coaches' salaries. My concern has always been the disparity between the, essentially the subsidy that we provide to one sport for, over another. And when I look at the overall cost per participant, uh, for all sports, and I assume that even though you have been able, unable to disaggregate, as you pointed out, some of the revenues, uh, the overall cost of, the overall deficit is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for, in essence, that's what we're spending to provide sports to our high school athletes, which I totally believe in. But that's six hundred and twenty-five dollars per participant and that's a growing number, not a shrinking number. I can remember in prior reports that that number has been smaller.
My.
Sorry, Steve.
My summary here shows five seventy-two, seventy-three. Oh, that, oh, I see. I'm sorry. Am I looking at just the fall here?
Probably, yeah. I think the.
Oh, total. I'm sorry. Okay, yes.
Okay, six twenty-five oh nine is the cost per participant. So, and that's just the average. And your principal knows exactly where I'm going.
So do I.
So when I, so when I flip down to page two and I look at ice hockey, I, I just get uncomfortable on a number of levels. Um, so the first question I have is, are you one hundred percent certain that after all of the work that your predecessor did to create this Carver-Wareham collaboration which had, which involved both wrestling and ice hockey, that this is in fact the true cost for Wareham for the ice hockey program? There's no.
That this is the actual true cost?
In other words.
What you're looking at here, twenty-four thousand, eleven dollars?
It cost us, it cost us almost eighteen thousand dollars to support ten, ten kids? Is that, that's truly an accurate number?
Eighteen thousand. I believe so, yeah.
Two years ago, that was thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, except that it was on a per participant basis, which is my hunt. It was, it has never been close to two thousand dollars.
Why?
It has generally been close to a thousand dollars.
Right.
Now we're getting, closing in on.
We've never had thirty-five participants in hockey.
Excuse me?
We've never had thirty-five participants in hockey.
Uh, I don't know about thirty-five. I'm just looking at today's numbers. And I'm pretty sure that we've never closed in on, almost closing in on two thousand dollars per participant for ice hockey. And this collaboration with Carver was supposed to ameliorate what it was already the most expensive sport by far on a per participant basis. And I'm sorry, when we're in this process of trying to find money in any way we can and laying off teachers, et cetera, I'm really uncomfortable with that number. So help me get more comfortable. And finally, why didn't we include the five girls in the numerator, excuse me, the denominator when we divided the seventeen thousand, eight seventy-five? Are they totally separate and distinct?
Totally. That is totally, totally, that is a program that is, uh, it's a cooperative with Bourne and Mashpee.
Okay.
And they are.
I thought you'd probably.
They are completely self-funded. Bourne doesn't provide them with any money.
I got it.
Mashpee doesn't provide them with any money.
Okay.
They raise twenty-five thousand dollars a year on their own to run that program.
So we had ten, ten guys. We gave them almost two thousand dollars in subsidy from our precious LEA. They were O and eighteen, which is important but not important because that's not really what we're about, but it still means it's not a, what I'll call a successful program, both in terms of number of participants or the ability to develop proficiency. So why should we continue this sport?
Well, first of all, the, the first thing that I would say to that is, um, number one, we have a, an agreement with Carver to, for a two-year program. Okay? So that's, that, I think that needs to be said right up front. We made a commitment to that for, for two years. Um, you're, you're talking to a hockey player.
Good.
Um, every school system has the same issue. This is not something that's unique to Wareham. So I understand what you're saying and I remember when I was playing high school hockey, our athletic director was the basketball coach and he hated hockey.
I don't hate hockey.
So my, all right, so first of all, the numbers look like right now, they will go up to somewhere, from Wareham, we lost one player from the team, one senior, and I believe we're going to add at least four to five players from Wareham for next year.
I swear, I heard the same thing from Mr. LaRanger the last, a year ago.
Jeff, talk into the mic.
That's, that's possible. That's based on us talking with the eighth grade hockey coach and taking a look at the players that went to Upper Cape and are enrolled at Wareham High School. So that's, no, is it, that a guarantee? Our volleyball team had twenty girls signed up as ninth graders this year. They ended up with two. And they actually signed up. So, you know, there's no.
I, I know that problem.
Yeah, I know you do. I know you do. Um, I think you also have to have, uh, if you're looking at cutting a, a, a male sport, Title IX comes into effect and you could be looking at cutting a female sport as well. And so that's another reason, I'm giving you the reasons that, that I can't. Um, and, and I'll, and I'll end with that. I mean, you are talking about students who are passionate and, you know, about their sport, just like many are. Um, I'd hate to see them left without a program the way our volleyball team was left without a program and, you know, because of that, those interests. So do I think that it is equitable? No, it's not.
If I can add just a couple of things and I'm, I'll be upfront, I'm a little biased. I did play a little hockey back in the day, but.
Is there anybody out here who hasn't played hockey?
Me. But with that said, uh, two things, if I can, and I know I've said it before, I don't feel student athletes should be punished because their sport is expensive. I understand hockey's expensive. We've done our due diligence, I feel, in bringing that down, uh, to three or four years ago hovering forty thousand dollars, two years ago thirty-five, and we've brought it down substantially lower. The other thing you've got to remember is the students leaving the middle school have a lot, thank you, Christian, have a lot of options. And one thing that does keep the students here in town is the array of athletic programs that we have. And, uh, I will tell you, cutting, uh, being an ex-hockey player, cutting hockey would mean that those ten kids, and I know it's an expensive price to pay, would, would not be attending Wareham High School because they have been playing hockey, uh, since shortly after they walked. All ten of those kids. And I do think the numbers will be there. Uh, we had three or four kids that were going to Upper Cape, uh, and decided to stay in Wareham, uh, because they wanted to play for this program. And, uh, we have a coach that's very invested and he wants to build this program up. So I would ask that you kindly give us a couple of years and if I'm back here in two years saying the same thing, it'll be, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll have another conversation about maybe eliminating that. But I'm very confident with the program that we have, uh, that we will be up, uh, in two years in the twenties.
Michelle, you have that, right?
It's public record.
I want to add to that. Um, I was at every single home game last year and just do a couple of away games. If you saw, they had one player from Carver that was on the ice for the entire forty-five minutes. Never came. If you saw, they had one player from Carver that was on the ice for the entire forty-five minutes, never came off. If you saw the way, they didn't have a great amount of talent, they had some good players, they had three All-Stars on a team that was, uh, three All-Stars that only, the league only gives twelve All-Stars, they had three from Werham on a team that didn't win a game. If you saw the way that those student athletes worked on that ice and did what their coach told them to do, if you heard what the parents said about this coach, uh, Brian Erickson, I think you might, there might be a little bit more excitement on your end about it than there is on my end about it.
I love hockey.
I don't, I, I question that.
Okay, so I'm gonna stop this here, because I don't want it to be a debate on whether, you know-
Jeff loves hockey.
Or the athletic report to only focus on one sport and hockey. So I appreciate that, I appreciate your comments, but I'm gonna move on to other questions.
Excellent.
Yes.
But, but my question is about hockey.
Okay, just as long as it's not-
No, I, I share Mr. Swett's concerns too. Uh, and I was surprised to hear that the girls managed to raise twenty-five thousand dollars on their own. And, but how come, how come we're not trying anything like that?
The girls' team.
How come, how come the boys' team isn't trying that?
Well, we, we also, uh, are, there is a group called, um, Watch, which is a group that raises money for hockey, from youth hockey all the way up. That group provided us with helmets for every player on the team, and gloves for every player on the team. So we, they, they are raising money to help subsidize, you know, the cost of the sport.
And, but that doesn't show up in the report?
No.
As like other, right, I mean, no?
No, no.
And it's not twenty-five?
It's not money that, it's not money, that money, those donations were made directly to the teams.
And it wasn't twenty-five thousand dollars, I take it?
Oh, no, no, it was a couple thousand.
Okay, um, 'cause I mean, this, this just stuck in my head when I read this, 'cause I know this comes, this comes up all the time, but this, this is an article from Werham, we, June twentieth. And you, you remember we cut, um, volleyball, and, um, and, and those kids wanted to play so bad that they went out and raised the money on their own. Alright, and, and there's an interesting quote in here from one of the players. Um, they had to raise six thousand dollars, and, um, I'll just, I'll just read it. It says, sophomore Stephen Florido, Florindo also plays hockey and football. Quote, "I've never had to ra, I've never had to fundraise for a sport before, so at Florindo." Why not? Why don't these kids have to fundraise for a sport?
Our, almost, our teams are told they need to raise money for the things that we cannot provide for them, such as warmups, jackets, the things that we always provided for them. And we used to, their letter jackets, we used to buy for them. So, our basketball team raises money, the money goes into the boosters account, the money comes out of the boosters account to pay for awards, comes out of the boosters account to pay for warmup uniforms, um, and then ten percent of the money that goes into the boosters account is used for like a general account. For instance, if we wanted to buy a recumbent bike to put in the weight room, so that students that were hurt would be able to train, so to speak, um, when they couldn't participate because of the injury that they had. So, there's, there's fundraising going on. Um, I was, and I think Mr. Palladino will agree with this, we want that boosters fund account, we thought it was best, we provide what they need, and then the boot, and the fundraising that they do are for the frills, so to speak, such as, uh, those items that I mentioned.
And, and I would argue, they all pay user fee, which is a form of fundraising in itself. And, I mean, I, I want to reiterate the fact that we are very competitive, there's a lot of competition with where these students are gonna go. And if you throw too much at these student athletes, they're already required to do community service projects, they're required to do this fundraising, they're required to have higher academic expectations. I mean, we're trying to keep these kids in Werham.
But the girls do it, and they've got a GPA of ninety-one. I mean, I don't know.
Their parents do the fundraising.
Well, can these other kids' parents do some fundraising?
Alright.
I, I can move on to other, okay.
Well, can I see if Cliff has a question?
Oh, sure, sure.
No, good guy, let him finish.
Oh, and, and I, I mean, I'll add, I mean, I love hockey, I love everything about hockey, right? I love the ethic, I love the philosophy, I love, I, I, I'm a big hockey fan. You know, but, but, I mean, the mantra we keep hearing from the town side is, you know, wait till next year, it's gonna be even worse when it comes to finances, and it's gonna be less and less defensible to, to keep this. And when you say we have a two-year commitment, I remember explicitly, um, when we had that discussion that we could opt out at any time. That's how I remember that conversation.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay. Anything?
Yeah, I, I, I just, um, I got a couple of questions, um, in terms of, of the report, and I guess it's because I'm not really a numbers person, I don't understand, uh, some of this. But on this report, relative, it doesn't make any difference what page I'm looking at, is there a place on this report where I can see the proportion of the LEA attributed to that sport?
No.
Well-
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question.
The budget. It, the, the, there is an athletic budget from the LEA. Wha, how much of the LEA budget is apportioned, you know, the, the, it break, it, I don't know if it breaks down by sport, and I think it, I, actually I think it does in the budget presentations, but-
With your approval, Madam Chair, I want to, 'cause I created the template, I take some responsibility for this. You want a comparison to the-
I don't want a comparison, I just want to know.
Well, the four hundred-
Because all that I see here is user fees, gate receipts, or other. There is no way that I can see how much of the local budget was attributed to that sport.
That's the deficit.
That's the deficit?
Yes.
So that comes out of the budget?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, alright. And, alright.
So we had, if this helps, we had about a two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollar budget.
Yeah.
Less the twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand dollars that was taken by our previous superintendent. So what you're looking at there, the-
So the deficit of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand is the budget?
Is, is what we spent. Well, it's the bu, yeah, it's the budget.
No, I, I don't care what you spent. I want to know how much of it was attributed to the budget.
It's the budget.
Okay. In terms of, um, the, the program, um, I, I have always said that, you know, we have to take a look at our numbers, and we have to ta, you know, we have to increase our participation rate, um, in sports. But being the father of three daughters, all of which are athletes, uh, I know how important sports are and activities are for the young people, uh, today. So, um, I too have some concerns about hockey, but my concerns are a little bit different. Um, my concern is the fact that, you know, there is the perception out there in the community that life is bigger and better somewhere else. And if we're going to start cutting programs and cutting sports and, and, and continue to, to cut, 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 then that's going to further propagate that myth that life is better somewhere else. So, even though I am concerned about a participation of ten kids in, in hockey, I just think that's, that's undersubscribed. Uh, the point that, um, we have to try to build up our programs, uh, is a, a better goal than trying to cut our programs. So, I think a more important goal would be to make these programs, uh, to make the participation rate of these programs higher. And by the same token, uh, when you get a participation rate that's higher, you're gonna have, uh, better capacity for fundraising. I mean, ten parents can only, I mean, uh, you know, a group of parents for ten kids is only gonna be able to raise X number of dollars. But I mean, if you have twenty parents or thirty parents, then you, you've got a nucleus of people that you can draw on.
No, I, I, I agree. You know, you can take field hockey, for example, uh, you know, based on what the budget is. If you had, let's say fifteen more young ladies playing, and they were playing field hockey, the user fees alone would pretty much cover the coach.
Right.
And, and, and the buses and that type of thing wouldn't be that much more money. So, the more participation that we have, the, the amount of money that it brings into the program is disproportionate.
Right.
Meaning, we're gonna get a lot more bang for our buck, because we have more students playing.
These prices, uh, these costs are fixed, and like Steve said, you know, and Steve did a great job getting all these eighth grade waivers. I mean, we've got more eighth grade waivers this season, so we anticipate there'll be even more user fees because of those eighth grade waivers and more participation. And Mr. Swell, appreciate less per, per athlete.
And I, I, you know, the reality is that we have to expand and get more kids involved in the athletic program. And one of the ways, see, these are all interrelated issues as far as I'm concerned. And so, one of the ways to do that is to start nicking away at this myth out there in the community that things are bitter, bigger and better down the road. And that we're losing kids for cho, for choice, because somehow or other, we have probably done a poor job at promoting how good our school system is. And the more kids we get to stay in Werham, and the more kids we get to participate, and to get that blood flowing blue, the better it's gonna be for our athletic program. So I see these two issues as linked. But, the reality is, when you're cutting programs and, and, and cutting staff, and seeing elementary class sizes go up, you know, it is very difficult to justify a two thousand dollars per kid, uh, expense for one particular sport. You know, you have to be realistic about it. But I think the goal at this particular point in time would be to increase our enrollment in athletics and all other extracurricular activities. And the other thing i- in, in terms of that, and the related issue, is let's start really putting the, putting our best foot forward and, and, and working at, informing the public of exactly how good our school system is. Because we can, we can talk about test scores, we could talk about college board scores, we could talk about AP programs, and they cannot be matched. What we offer our kids cannot be matched at these quote-unquote "better places to go."
I, I couldn't agree with you more. Um, we do need to do a better job of, and I'm talking about the entire district, I'm not talking, and, and, as a parent of two students, uh, if I'll, and I'll ring their bells, two very successful, uh, uh, students of, uh, of Werham High School, that, I've seen them be successful back in two thousand and one and two thousand and four, things were a lot better then, uh, as far as our, our numbers and that type of thing. So what I see is twofold. One, we do, and as a resident of Werham now, we, we do need to pound, so to speak, the positive that we have to offer, including our athletic program in the, in this district. And, um, the one conundrum that I've found is that, how do we overcome the conversation that I had with a young lady who I had in the fifth grade in the summer program, when I said to you, her, "You are a tremendous athlete, yet you're not playing any sports." Why is that? She said, "I'm lazy. I don't want to do it, I'd rather go home and play with my computer, I'd rather go home and play with my electronics." And I think, as much as anything as far as participation in athletics, that just, I mean, and what does that mean? That means we need, we need more support from the parents with those students. Because when my son came to me and said, "I'm not playing baseball, and I'm not playing, playing, uh, basketball," which he played at youth, I said, "Well, fine, find four clubs to join, 'cause you're not going home after school every day." He found boys volleyball. And when they were very good, and they were going to the state tournament and that type of thing, but I don't see that type of support for our students from our families in this town.
All the more reason to hold to that practice, and I think we instituted it to a degree, but I don't think it's a hundred percent yet, to, to hold to that practice, that a student does not participate in an athletic program without first having the parents attend an orientation meeting. Let the parents know what those expectations are for our athletic program.
That's something, uh, that Mr. Palladino and I have discussed, uh, based on the, the number of people that came to our meet the coaches, our mandatory meet the coaches meeting.
If they don't come, a representative from that family doesn't come, or make arrangements to meet with those coaches, the kid doesn't play. And I think if we start holding to that, you're gonna start getting the parents involved, the parents are gonna understand what the expectation is.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but the problem is not with the parents of the kids that are playing.
I understand that, but it, again, it's just like every other myth. It, it feeds off itself. The snowball gets bigger and bigger as it starts rolling downhill. And those parents talk to other parents. So, anyways, that's my soapbox.
Two quick things. One is, as a coach, there's no way I ever want to penalize a player for the fact that a parent doesn't show up at a meeting. I mean-
Well, you wouldn't have coached in Sandwich then.
Maybe I wouldn't have coached in Sandwich, but if a player shows up and he can't get his parents to come, I'm not gonna say to that kid, "You can't play." I just, I'm not gonna say that. So, fire me if you want to.
Okay.
The second question is, your, your GPA, um, the average GPA for the, for the participants was, was eighty. I love the answers that the soccer captains gave about being a student athlete. Um, how does that compare to the average GPA in the high school?
Substantially higher.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you. You have a number, just out of curiosity?
It's mid-seventies, I, I don't want to give you the exact, but it's mid-seventies is the average.
Great, thank you.
Alright, then I'll get off my question of the football, basketball, and golf that are all under eighty. So, I was just going to see how we're trying to up those, but I'm sure that, you know, other things that you've been saying that you are.
Well, I, I think, um, a, a small portion of that is the numbers that you have. You have a very more, of, of, it, it's much more a broad representation of the, of the, of the students that are in our school, because there are so many more players playing football and basketball. If you look at their numbers, they're probably the highest numbers that we have.
What, the basketball and football, when it comes to the grade point average, are, they're, these are all under eighty. The rest of the teams-
They're closer to, they're higher than the average, but, but-
Yeah, but lower than-
But lower than the teams that have less numbers participating.
Except for golf.
I think you, if you als, if you look at this, you're also gonna see a discrepancy in boys' sports and girls' sports, as far as grade point averages. Not all, but there is a discrepancy there, and, um, these young ladies, I'm also the dean of students for the senior class, and these young ladies that you had sitting down here that are captains, um, a great bulk of those are top ten, not top ten percent, top ten in their class. And they have that work ethic that, um, they came here with. And they came here with that partially through our, our, our school system, you know, in the, in the lower grades. But if you met their parents, you would see a big reason why they are as successful as they are academically.
One of the things that we talked about, um, that I had an opportunity at the break to talk to Principal Palladino about, was just the opportunity to hear from each one of the, um, athletes on some of the needs that they're looking for. So getting a athletic, uh, or a student perspective on what they think, what they would need from a community, and also from a school system, um, to better improve their sport, to be able to get more, you know, the things that we're talking about here, more money into their sport, all of those things. So, hopefully we'll be able to do that and hear the, the students' perspective also.
And, and I think that's a great idea. I think that, um, one of the best ways of doing that is, as, as, as we talked about before, would, is, is the, uh, you know, pounding the positive, so to speak.
Anything else? Yes.
Getting toward the, um, the increased GPAs and, um, trying to promote the positive, uh, trying to get kids more involved, more interested. I used to roll my eyes when everyone used to say that, you know, the sports are so good for academics and the kids do better, and, and then I went to that, that, I think it was, what, the awards night? The way they do all the scholarships? And, uh, I, I think, I wish I kept track, it was probably like ninety-nine percent of those kids, between all of their extracurricular activities, the kids that were getting scholarships had one sport in there somewhere in their, in their portfolio.
And if not a sport, they were actively involved in other extracurricular-
True, true, but I was just surprised, uh, it's, almost invariably, they were involved in sports. It was, I was just surprised in that, and, and, and that translated to real money. You know, they're higher GPAs, and, and being active and involved, and, and, and they got money for school. So that, that's, that's a selling point right there.
Well, I, I push, as, as a dean, and I know the other administrators in our school, and I'm sure the, the teachers do too, we, we push, you know, we tell them, schools aren't looking for just an athlete, or they're not looking just for a musician, they're looking for a very well-rounded person. And those students that you're talking about, in addition to being athletes, were also presidents of several different clubs, or, you know, whatever it is. And, um, you know, it's not, uh, from what I've been told- And, um, you know, it's not, uh, from what I've been told, it's not all academics when you're walking into a, a college interview. You know, they're looking for that person that can contribute to their school as well as maintaining a high GPA and producing a Nobel scholar or, you know, that type of thing.
Also, I had a question about wrestling.
Okay.
Uh, what, what happened with that?
With wrestling, we, uh, we started off and went real well. And we had, uh, we had about ten kids that were involved. And, uh, what happened was through, we, we calculate the numbers, just so I think you're clear on it, by how many kids end the season, not how many kids start the season. And, and basically, uh, with two weeks left, uh, you know, we had a few kids drop here and there. It was kind of ironic, they all made it through the first week and a half, which is, as you know, is the toughest time, you know, conditioning and whatnot. And, uh, unfortunately, we had a few kids that got hurt, a few kids with some personal issues, and they ended with two at the end of the season. We're hopeful that, again, that will be, those numbers will increase. It, it was a great program. I had a chance to see one match at Carver. Both of our wrestlers, uh, did wrestle in that match. Um, it was their last match of the season against Kohasset, I believe. And, and, uh, one of the kids, uh, did win by pin, so it was pretty exciting. We're hoping to, to get those numbers up as well.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I need to ask for last questions here, just because we need to move on in the agenda, but-
Well, I understand.
No, 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 go ahead.
It, it's about the report.
Yep.
If you don't want to-
No, 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 I do. I'm, I'm just saying a blanket statement to all.
On, on, on this report, the parentheses on the deficit, does that mean that, like, for example, volleyball, that was self-sufficient?
Yes.
Is that, is that what that means?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, none of the budget went to so- volleyball?
None.
They raised their own money.
See, this is the part that I don't quite understand. I, I'm of the mindset, and I, I, again, I may be all wet on this, but I'm of the mindset that everybody deserves a part of the budget. And so, what this tells me-
Volleyball was cut.
All right, that's, all right, all right, so I'll take another one then.
But I thought you would like to see that information in there, so-
All right, just take another one then. I, I used the wrong... My point is, my point is still legitimate, whether it be a deficit or not. The point is, the only ti- the only reference to the budget is when they don't make enough to meet expenses. And that comes out of the LEA. My point is, it would seem to me that every sport should have the ability to have a portion of the budget. A certain amount of that budget allocated to that sport. To me, this makes no sense.
So, you've got different costs for different sports. For instance, you know, officials, equipment, etc.
I understand that, but that could be factored in. What I'm trying to say to you is, there doesn't seem to be any equity here in terms of one sport over another, in terms of what the LEA pays for that sport.
There isn't.
And this fluctuation from year to year-
Doesn't seem normal.
Never will be.
I guess not, because the, the expenses are different.
And this fluctuation, one year you may need to buy high jump matches for track and field. Ten years after that, you, you know, maybe you have to do that again.
Right, but what I'm trying to say to you is, there are sports that are taking a higher percent of the budget, and if you look at it from terms of, you know, if you looked at it in terms of participation, that's fine, okay? But the bottom line is, there are going to be extraordinary things. And, you know, I know that, uh, there probably has been sports that they haven't bought a uniform in ten years or fifteen years. And yet, there are other sports in which their uniforms are bought on a regular basis. I'm just using that as an example. But what I'm sorry, trying to say to you is, there is no, there is no system in which a particular sport, a coach, let's say that I'm the softball coach, and I say, "Okay, how much of the budget have I got a portion to softball?" So, I can make some ideas of how many bats I'm going to buy, how many balls I'm going to buy, whatever the case may be. That doesn't exist.
It's needs-based.
I, 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 I just think that's a lousy way to operate. That's just my opinion.
Yes?
Thank you. To Principal Palladino or whoever wants to answer it, uh, what, what are the academic requirements for participating in sports? And I'm, I'm, in terms of, um, the number of classes you need to pass? And I ask because I know it changes year to year depending on-
It hasn't changed in a couple of years. They have to pass six.
They have, they have to pass six?
Six classes, correct.
So, how many classes do the kids take?
Uh, it could be seven, it could be eight, depending on the year.
So, they're, they're allowed to, they're, uh, these days, they're allowed to fail two classes?
Correct. When I was principal, they were allowed to fail three. And we moved, uh, when I first started, and we moved it up, uh, two years ago to they have to pass six.
All right, and, um, and, and that, and that's, and that's better. You know, I mean, I've, I've, I've called around to surrounding towns, and that's better than some, a lot of the surrounding towns are doing.
We're one of the highest in the South Coast country.
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, I'm, I'm going to bring up what I brought up during, during the superintendent's interview. I mean, uh, I'd like to get your thoughts from the, the, um, either the interim or the, or the current athletic director on what, what you think about having these, all these kids in all extracurricular, but since sport, since sports is here tonight, having to pass all of their classes to, to participate in sports.
I am all for raising the bar. This is my personal opinion, though. It was a lot higher when I was in school. I also think students, if we set the bu- bar higher, they will reach higher. And, uh, you know, they, they know. Maybe, maybe they don't know their freshman year or, or whatever it is, but eventually, they're going to figure out, "Okay, I've got to make sure I'm passing six or seven or five or whatever the bar is." And, you know, they might be devoting time to one class and ignoring the other because they say, "I don't have to pass that one."
So, you-
So, I think it should be higher, yes.
Would you be okay with having to pass all of their classes? Get at, at least a D minus on all of their classes?
Personally, yes.
That's what I wanted to hear.
My only concern with that is, if I can add, I think what we'll have is we'll have kids that will take less challenging classes because sports mean that much to those students. And that's my, has been my only concern and my apprehension with, with moving it up anymore. You have seniors that take seven courses. Some of these kids that were here tonight are taking three and four advanced placement courses. Now, if they get in over their head and they fail one, uh, you know, and they may do that for one term and may right the ship and, and by the end of the year, get that back up to where it needs to be. That's my only concern on that, is, is what happens to those advanced courses? Because I'll tell you what, there are kids that will go to that college prep course just to make sure they can play sports because it means that much to them.
And we actually had a student last year that was pulled off a team, who was in that category, was pulled off a team because, uh, uh, you know, a B wasn't good enough.
By his parents, right.
By his, by his parents, yeah, that's, that, that's the way it should work in the, if everything was perfect. But, I mean, I bring it up because, I mean, Wareham students who happen to go to Upper Cape, that's the requirement. They aren't allowed to, they aren't allowed to fail any of their classes. And I think that if we're preparing kids from, in, in this high school for college and offer a vocation, I think that we can at least ma- make the same, make the same requirements on, on these kids. Set that expectation.
Now, playing devil's advocate, you also have the kids that are going to Upper Cape. That Upper Cape chooses to go there.
True.
As opposed to much typical public.
No, no, I know the whole argument, yes.
And if they fail, we get them back anyways.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
I, I would just like to, once again, uh, I know you were here at that point in time, but, um, just for the folks that weren't, we were in dire straits. Uh, September, mid-September, we found out the athletic director was leaving. It was the middle of the fall season. I went to Steve and asked him to step up. And, uh, he was the site manager, which meant he, he went to a few games every ye- every season to help out the athletic director. And he took the reins and basically handled two full-time jobs at once for the whole school year, kept the athletic department afloat um, so that we could be in a position to hire someone as, as a part-time athletic director. And, and I definitely want to welcome Ed Roderick's here, who's here tonight to get a flavor for what to expect in the, in the winter when he does his fall presentation. And, uh, I want to welcome him aboard. He's a, a retired teacher, uh, for thirty-three-plus years and a retired coach, uh, from New Bedford. And, and he's done a great job, and I want to thank Steve again. He's done a great job allowing for this transition. And, um, and I, I appreciate the work they've both done. And I look forward to working with them both, uh, for the rest of this year and, and hopefully for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Last official act. Appreciate it, bro.
All right, moving on to the article for our Fall Town Meeting.
That's me. Hey. Thank you. As we mentioned at our last school committee meeting, the town of Wareham and the school district was invited into the accelerated repair program of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, uh, with the, the replacement of the poten- a potential partial roof replacement for the high school. And, uh, the first, we'd applied to that program, and we've been, uh, welcomed into it. The first step in that process is the conducting of a preliminary feasibility study to look at the design of the roof and the scope out the full cost of the replacement. Uh, the reason it's here today is we have to find the funding for that feasibility study in order to get it underway, and that's one of the first hurdles we have to, uh, that we have to take as part of this project. There is a, a reimbursement of the funds from the, uh, Massachusetts School Building Authority of sixty-eight percent, but obviously, we have to provide the full amount, uh, to begin with. So, we have a couple of options in how we find those funds. And, uh, we can either, uh, look to our own school budget, find the money with the, the idea in mind that we will get that reimbursed in the school year. Or we can seek, uh, additional funds from the town at the next town meeting. And similarly, again, we'd make the case that that money will be refunded. So, we've drafted a, a, an article for the next, uh, Fall Meeting of Town, but I wanted to bring this to your consideration and get your views, what you'd like to do.
So, the question is, so are you looking for feedback to the article that's in front of us?
Yeah.
Um, or are you actually asking for the committee to discuss, um, whether to go to town meeting with this article or to look for the money within our own LEA and pay for the feasibility study upfront?
Yeah, exactly, the second one. So, what should the school committee prefer we do?
Okay.
If I could add, we haven't budgeted for this money. So, we would need to pull it from some account to fund this study. And then, we would need to reimburse the account. So, it's not as if we have money waiting to be used. I just need to make sure that everybody understands that.
And before I open it up to questions, do you have an idea within the current LEA where there could be funds used at the beginning of the year that we think that can be reimbursed towards the end? So, that account doesn't fall into deficit?
We would be looking at school choice money. As you know, we receive funds from the state for students that come into our district as school choice students, and that would be the money that would be available for us to use at this point.
So, I'll open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Yes?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. I am adamantly opposed to taking this out of the LEA. I think every time we get ahead of the citizens of this town, we can run into problems. If we took it out of the LEA and then ultimately put the issue before the town as to whether we move forward with the whole project, we could have spent sixty thousand dollars, um, for nothing. The value of bringing it to the Fall Town Meeting is to get a sense of the town as to whether they're going to support the overall project. If they don't support the feasibility study, knowing that two-thirds of the cost of the whole project, including the feasibility study, is going to be reimbursed by the state, then we simply stop there, and we haven't wasted sixty thousand dollars. I think sixty thousand dollars is too important a part of the LEA's budget to gamble that the town will ultimately support the project.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Swett used the key word gamble. I'm, I'm done gambling. Um, so, I, I would go before town meeting.
I agree with, uh, Mr. Swett to a degree. I absolutely agree with everything he said. Uh, if we don't go before the town, uh, with this proposal, and it isn't made, and it isn't brought to their attention, make, make them aware that not only are we looking for a feasibility study, but somewhere down the road, we're going to be looking for more. And to get a sense from the town on whether or not they, um, support it, I, I think would be appropriate. The only thing that I think that we might want to consider, and this is just, I'm just throwing it out there, throwing a trial balloon out there, is if we do a, um, a, uh, a por- proportional, uh, perspective. In other words, um, word the, the article the same way and ask for a finite number, uh, from the town and the school department to show a good faith number. So, for example, uh, it, it may be appropriate at this particular point in time to say, um, we'd like to have the town, um, appropriate borrow. I'm just throwing these numbers out there. Appropriate, but transfer, borrow, uh, a sum not to exceed forty thousand dollars, and any balance of the feasibility study to be borne by the school department. That shows the community that, uh, yes, it is important, and yes, they are going to have to be vested in it to a degree, but also that we're going to try to figure out a way in which you can pay for part of the burden. Um, so, um, that would be the only suggestion that I would throw out there. And again, I'm not sure if it makes any sense, so I just open it up for debate.
So, I have to agree with my colleagues when it comes to, uh, taking the money out of the LEA at this point, very, very difficult. I mean, we know that this is an important project. The town has heard this is an important project. We got the roof fixed because the town was, was good enough at a town meeting to, um, help us raise the money to be able to get the roof patched. So, um, the good thing about this is that there is a precedent set. And going into town meeting, um, and making the good argument, I have faith going in and making this argument, that hopefully will come out on the winning side of it. But I, without knowing that, um, and without asking for the town to weigh in on it, I feel the exact same way, taking the sale out of, out of the LEA. Um, I just, there, we just don't have the money. So, I think that we're all in agreement from what I heard. I think that we're all in agreement that taking the sixty K out of the LEA and just going for it now is, is not really something that-
Mike said he wanted to do that.
No.
No, he didn't.
Oh, I thought you said you wanted to do that, take it out now.
No, no, I, I said, I said I don't want to gamble. I mean, we gambled with textbooks and got nothing, you know, come on.
I mean, he wants to spend sixty thousand on ice hockey, but not for a roof. Sorry, Scott. Uh, but, so, let's, let's then, if it's okay with the committee, let's go back to the article and, um, see. So, it sounds like putting this article on town meeting floor is, is the will of the committee. So, now, let's talk about the actual language in it and, and whether, um, Dr. Sylvia's idea of, uh, putting in some language that shows good faith from the school system to be able to bear a portion of those costs um, is the, you know, the thing that we want to do in this article.
I don't even know if it's a good idea, but it would just show good faith, that's all.
I, I think it's a, it's a, definitely, it's a good discussion point. Yes?
Nine o'clock this coming Friday is a meeting of the Capital Planning Committee. I have it on my calendar. I hope to be able to attend. The agenda item is basically to update their, um, the list of all the things that need to be done in the town for which they have no money. I hope to be able to get them to add, uh, these dollars. And, but I am not in any way optimistic, because it's one thing to get two-thirds of something. It's another thing to have the third. And, um, and I don't know whether they're, where they're going to find over three hundred thousand dollars when they've got a list of items to be, to be, um, to be dealt with that, that are in the millions. So, I think we have a serious issue. The actual language, I don't have a particular problem with the language. When it comes to a motion that people will vote on, there will have to be a dollar figure put in there if we want to subdivide it between the town and the school. To me, school buildings, town buildings, they're all one and the same. It's, it's a town responsibility to maintain and to build whatever facilities are necessary to support the services that we want to provide. But I don't have any problem with the language, other than the fact that we do need to have a number so that the finance committee can insert that when the motion is made.
Okay. Other comments, yeah?
Um, I said I, I don't want to gamble, but I, at the same time, I actually am pretty optimistic about this. I mean, I think anyone that looks at this, whether it's capital planning or the town administrator or the selectman, hopefully, they'll realize it's going to cost a lot more not to do this than to do it. I mean, that's just fact. That's just the numbers. Um, and, and it's, and the, the, the timing isn't great- Um, and it, and it's, and the, the, the timing isn't great, but this is, this needs to be done and it's, it's just so, so fortunate. I couldn't believe when I saw Mr. Palladino on the selectmen's meeting, we hadn't met in so long and he made his case and I was like, oh, that's great. And I, and I, I just hope that everyone else feels that way too, but I am a little optimistic about it. Oh, and I, I'm fine with this language.
You had made your point, but do you have another one? Uh, when, I think that Dr. Sylvia's suggestion is a good one. I think that my preference though would to offer that as an amendment on town meeting floor. If that, if all of a sudden we see that that's the will of the town, I, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Sweat, that it's the school buildings or town buildings, it's capital, and we need to be able to work with the town, to beg from the town, to whatever we can do to be able to have an equal playing field with all of the, the buildings and towns. And so I'd like us to be able to go for the full sixty, make the argument on town meeting floor. Hopefully, Mr. Palladino will do, you know, similar things that we did with the patch to the roof and have the students involved in that process. Because I think that it did shed light on um, how this affects our students on a daily basis. Um, I, I thought that that was, that was great to be able to put that, um, that forward. Uh, so that's my opinion. I don't have a problem with the language. I do agree that we have to put a number in there before this goes any further. Um, but at, at this point, um, even though I think it's a great suggestion, I would want us to go forward with the full sixty and leave the, the, or whatever the cost may be and, and go for the full amount.
Could I just ask, Mr. Palladino, uh, what is the cost savings if this goes forward again?
The cost savings?
If, if, if everything goes as, as we hope, um, and, and we, we, we do this, will be reimbursed how much by the state?
Will be sixty-eight percent reimbursement. We anticipate that being hovering one million dollars in reimbursement.
To, to not do this would be throwing away a million dollars.
Six hundred and eighty.
Oh, six hundred and eight thousand dollars. Yeah, that, that's, that's just the fact. Thank you.
And if I can, we replaced the whole gym roof. It wasn't, we didn't, we haven't done patches in over, over two years.
Apologize.
I just, just so the public knows, we replaced the whole gymnasium roof. It was, it was leaking like a sieve.
And did that include the locker rooms at the time?
It did not, because that wasn't a, a huge area uh, of concern.
So the locker rooms still leak?
Not as bad as the second floor English and History wing.
Okay.
Would you like a motion?
Do you need a motion? Okay. Yes, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we um, approve the article for town meeting as provided to us by the business manager.
Do you wanna say, but inserting a dollar amount?
No, because that's, that's not necessary for the article on the warrant.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is acceptance of gifts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to recommend acceptance of the following gifts. Ten boxes of school supplies from Walmart, Stuff the Bus Event held on August tenth to the Minnetonka Forest and the Deacon's Elementary Schools. These items were donated by customers to be given to the local school district.
I'll accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
I would like to recommend the acceptance of the following gift. Twenty-five dollars from Mr. Sean England of Wareham to the Deacon's School Band Program. Mr. England performed at the onset band show on August twenty-first and took a collection to be given to the schools.
Great, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. We wanna thank Walmart as well as um, Mr. England for their donations and appreciate every much, every bit of it. Great, next item on the agenda is the monthly financial report. Hello again.
Hi, good evening again. I circulated-
Can you put the microphone up close to you and try to talk loudly?
I circulated the financial report eh, for just up to eh, August thirtieth to school committee. Overall, we're following a similar trend to eh, the start of last year. Although it is, you know, very early days and in this, you know, this budget summary doesn't reflect really many teachers pays because it's before, it's before the start of the year or sort of student out of district costs. So you'll see that's why some of these funds and some of, some of these functions are ending. Balance is still very close to the starting balance. There are eh, so hopefully, you know, when we come back in a month's time and with, to repeat, to give you a further update, we'll start to have some of those numbers and we'll be able to build a better picture of how our fin, fund, our spending's going at its early days. But as I say, we are sort of following a similar trend to last year. I mean, where my eh, the areas that I would draw your attention to really are is the maintenance of buildings, the maintenance of equipment.
Details to function numbers?
Yeah, they are four two two zero and four two three zero.
Mm-hmm.
And these are areas where there is, you know, there is a risk. We have to maintain a le, a certain level of, a certain standard in our buildings and our equipment in order to serve the needs of our students. And so they obviously present a risk to our budget. And similarly with our utility bills, and that's another area that we're gonna be looking at and looking at how we can reduce our energy costs. Because they can also eh, have a big impact on our budget. And eh, that's really the stuff here as I was gonna highlight, but I'm open to any questions.
Questions on the report?
No questions, thank, just thank you for um, producing it in a timely, timely manner.
Dr. Sylvia?
Yeah, I just um, I, I'd like to uh, um, compliment Michael on how he jumped in both feet and, and I, I know that he's had an awful lot to digest in a very, very short time in terms of the financial end of it. And uh, I do appreciate his efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just thinking, Michael, I share my colleagues' enthusiasm for the report. Um, I'm wondering if we could see an even um, streamlined report based upon the major accounts and consistent with the policy that exists about movement within those accounts. So we could get a comfort level every meeting or, that maybe it doesn't need to be every meeting, but certainly every month or so, that the major accounts are moving along exactly the way we anticipated. Because with this report as, as good as it is, we literally have to, we have to do the aggregation ourselves to get that same comfort level. Am I making sense?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, one of the things that we've been working on is sort of, you know, the trends of our budget over time and comparing it to how the budget developed last year. Because obviously, you know, these percentages tell you a story, but it's only part of the story. If you, if we have a big, if we should expect a peak later in the year or if we've actually, you know, if we're actually coming under our expected, expected budget. So maybe that's something I can work towards presenting some of those trends, which will help to give you that fuller picture.
Great, thank you.
I, I think-
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think to Mr. Sweat's point, I think all you'd have to do is literally copy and paste the function codes right out of the budget policy 'cause they're defined literally every one in the ca, in the right categories and just, you know, duplicate it that way, I think.
But the system gives you a ton of flexibility to create all these reports that we're looking for, right?
Absolutely.
And, and-
The system has constraints, but I think it's a great point to be able to follow that lead from the, from the policy.
And I think it's, excuse me, but I think it can be easily refined by the, by the, do we still have a budget advisory committee? If we don't, I assume we're going to have one.
Yes.
Um, and that could be refined so that when it was brought forward, it would be consistent with that. Thank you.
All right. You gonna review the revolving accounts?
Yes, eh, we've also, you've always, should also have received statement of our revolving accounts. Eh, again, there's not a huge amount of movement in this, as we're just at the start of the year. Uh, I don't know if there's any, there's obviously the biggest areas, transport where we have the funds set aside for additional buses. There's also significant funds in our school choice account eh, which the superintendent mentioned earlier. That is a, at the moment largely earmarked for salaries, which so you'll see that go down gradually over the course of the year. Andy, is there any questions, any particular funds?
I'm just gonna start it here, if that's okay. I, I think that, actually, did you like how I said, is, that's okay? And I'm not asking for any of your input on that.
Actually, I was noting that, yeah.
Okay, good. Um, this is, this is a report that I would like to see improvements on. I think that every single year um, or report, we get uh, where we stand.
Yeah.
It's great to know, but it doesn't basically give us what truly these revolving accounts are doing for the LEA as well as for the district. And so, um, if you can talk a little bit about if you have ideas on some of the things that you're gonna do in this report that basically shows us a truer picture of the revolvers, um, what the, how, what the money looks like coming in and also what the money is being spent for.
Well, I mean, I have, you know, I have been looking at some other districts and how they present the same information. And I would like, you know, I had in mind something, you know, wanting to work on this report a little as well. The very least, I would hope to do a sort of starting and finishing balance for each month that showed money had to come in and, and the money that had gone out and how, you know, how it was spent. I don't wanna overload this report, provide too much information, but just a broad idea of, you know, how much money is coming in and how much is going out each month and where it's being spent. Is that, would that help to meet some of your concerns?
It's a starting point, but I, I, I think as much, and I think that this is where it's probably gonna be more difficult 'cause I would love to see a narrative, you know, that, that talks about the ex, because there's a lot of things that you might just put on there. You know, we got five thousand dollars from the eighty make peace uh, uh, cranberry festival, you know, but at least something that kind of talks about where we're pulling money in from and then, you know, what we're going out. But I think that that's a great first start, just to, you know, let's start chipping away at this report and getting it so there's more detail behind it. Yes.
I also suspect, um, but I could be wrong in this, um, that if, if not some of these dollars are, may actually be almost encumbered, and if they're not encumbered, there's certainly plans for use.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that would be an interesting uh, information to, for us to have so that we don't look at a number like four hundred and some odd thousand dollars and think, oh, we got all sorts of money. Because my guess is, it's almost, as I say, encumbered.
Yeah, almost entirely, I mean-
Exactly.
Entirely earmarked for salaries or-
Right, so I think that would be, I don't care what you call the column, but something that says,
Yeah.
don't, don't look too much at this number because it frankly doesn't exist, it's already planned for.
No, that would be a good one. Other comments? All right, anything else?
No, under this item, but under the next one.
You're still with us?
Yeah.
Man.
Can't get rid of me.
All right, that's right, the request for transfers. There was a document that was sent out to us.
Yeah, this is a requesting the transfer of some funds between eh, accounts at the middle school. Hopefully you have received.
Yes, we did.
It's a taking a, taking funds from three separate accounts and transferring them to three other accounts. This is a largely to buy s, eh, materials and, you know, pen and paper and pencils to, for the middle school students to start the year and the teachers and students to start the year. I would just seek the school committee's approval to make those transfers.
Questions on the transfers?
Will you accept as presented?
Second.
Second for discussion, do you, did you have something?
I, I'm gonna say the obvious. This is a memo from, from the middle school principal to the prior superintendent. I'm assuming this has your blessing.
It does.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Thank you, Michael. Uh, superintendent's report?
Okay, thank you very much. Well, today is our second day of school. I would like to thank everyone for their hard work during the summer to get our buildings ready. Um, endless hours were spent working together, making this opening just wonderful. Smiling faces, teachers back in the classroom, bus routes were being driven without too much anxiety. And it's through the hard work of everyone, so thank you very much. Our enrollment yesterday was two thousand seven hundred twenty-three. Today, it was two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five, so we've gone up some. We are still enrolling at the West Academy and I will keep you updated on what the enrollment is for the night school. Um, if you haven't visited our new website, please do so. It's flashy. We're also going to be adding videos. Yesterday, I was lucky enough to walk around with a TV camera and we interviewed students. So we have a nice little video from high school students about their opening days. That will be on YouTube as well as Facebook.
Just, you were the videographer?
No, I was the interviewer, so I had the microphone. Yes, yeah. Um, so, we have pictures on our website. We will continue to share all the good news that's happening. And I would like to share with you, our next school committee meeting, we will have students from West who will be talking to us about the garden. And perhaps if you have any free cash, you might wanna bring it because they have cookbooks to sell that they've compiled. I was at West this morning and they were pulling weeds. They're still beautifying the ground, so they, they've done a very nice job. And that completes my report.
Just the one thing that I wanted to add, um, regarding the website, is that there, yeah, oh, yeah, get used to it. Um, that, sorry, um, this just goes along with the, the report. Along with the new website, there's also a calendar feature on there uh, that uh, will have uh, the latest events that are going on. And from what I hear from the superintendent, we're gonna try to put as much information up there as possible. So, not only for uh, WCTV, for our newspapers, as well as the community, we really want this to be the place where um, you're finding out the information that's going on and, and the events that are going on in our school. And so I encourage also each one of the administrators, no matter what's going on in your school, the art fair, if there is even a group of students that are gonna do a choral presentation in the lobby and it's okay to have community members in there, the, the smallest piece, um, getting that on that school calendar and then asking community members to go there, these are great ways to be able to um, learn about everything and all, you know, basically the, going with, with Dr. Sylvia was saying, tuning our own horn and finding out what's going in our school. So really hoping that that's gonna be a place where, um, we're, we're gonna start promoting all the great things that are happening and the events that are going in our school. So I'm sorry, Mr. Sweat?
I actually called transportation, I think on the afternoon of the first day, just to see how things are going. And no one answered. And I assumed I just had called at a bad time. And you equivocated just slightly in saying everything went smoothly. Would you like to elaborate? Maybe you don't want to elaborate on how it didn't go perfectly?
Well, no, it did not go perfectly, but we know the areas that we need to work on. Um, we certainly are making every attempt to be responsive to our community and to our students and to our families. And so we're looking at the areas that we think that we may need to make some adjustments and we will be doing so.
My biggest concern was the density, if you will, on the buses, just had we, had we, do we have overloaded buses potentially? And if that was a problem?
No, we do not have overloaded buses. We did have one very large bus pickup spot and we've moved that, so there's not as many kids in one area.
Good, thank you.
Yes.
The enrollment figures that you stated, are those, does that include kindergarten, which hasn't started yet?
It does include kindergarten. It does not include preschool.
Okay.
And kindergarten starts on the tenth.
Along with preschool?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is school committee reports. Um, this is appropriate for me to start first here. Uh, the superintendent and I still have not gotten together to uh, discuss what the subcommittees look like or the advisory committees. I promised to do that before our next school committee and we'll have a report out- I promised to do that before our next school committee, and we'll have a report out to you. But in the meantime, are there any reports that the school committee have? Okay. Is there any other business?
Can I?
Yes.
Could I, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I wasn't at the last meeting, so I guess I'll, I'll just shoot the works here. Is there any resolution to this Boys and Girls Club on Hammond School issue?
We are working on the resolution. Right now, the Boys and Girls Club has put in a rental agreement for the rest of the school year, so they are occupying the half of Hammond. We've contacted the other group that put in an RFP, and we are looking to see if we can work out an agreement to rent the other half of Hammond, if that would be appropriate. We've not heard back. We are still in negotiations, but we hope to have everything wrapped up in the next couple weeks.
So, whose final call is this?
It would go to the school committee, and then it would go to the Board of Selectment.
Because it just seems that this thing has been festering for a while, and I, you know, I'm sure everybody would like to get some closure on this.
You're exactly right.
So, all right, I didn't know, so what the heck, shoot the works.
Yes.
The, the RFP that went to the Board of Selectment, have they made a decision on that RFP?
No.
Thank you.
Any other business? Yes.
When are we gonna meet with the Board of Selectment about the budget?
Sure, so I had a meeting with them, I had, I'm sorry, I had a conversation with the chair last week. He's on vacation this week. When he gets back next week, then we'll be setting up the first meeting with the town manager, the superintendent, as well as the two chairs, as well as the finance chair, to come up with what the agenda should be for that meeting and then coming back to the boards and then calling that meeting.
So, so, have you met with any of them previously?
No.
You haven't?
No.
Just schedules conflict?
Scheduling conflicts.
Oh, okay.
Yep, we keep trying. But I, seriously, so, one board chair was on vacation. The next week, the next board chair, this week's another board chair. So, this has been going on for about a three weeks to a month now.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's the incoming chair now?
Larry. Anything else? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.